All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. It is 2:01 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Cornier, Bureau Commissioners Carolina Mahia, Gary Edwards, Emily Klaus, interim County Manager Robyn Campbell, Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder, and we have guests from Joint Animal Services. For our first topic, Sarah Hock, and public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're in session until 4:30 today. We have two executive sessions following the first business item, so there will be a pause there, and we'll try to delineate the time, and then we'll be back for a couple of other items at the tail end. But first up is the Jazzcom Quarterly Update. I'm looking to the interim county manager to tell us kind of what we're up to here.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this afternoon, you're kicking off your work session with our, what should become your regular quarterly meeting with Sarah Hock, the Director of Joint Animal Services. Sarah has provided a packet of information for you, and then one of the recent conversations the board had was regarding citations issued by Jazzcom in other jurisdictions. I have additional information from Sarah on that. So I would just at this time turn it over to Sarah and ask.
Sarah.
Sarah.
She has to.
Oh, you've got the, you've got the power. I'll help you bring it up.
You don't want that one.
Oh, no, that's not it, is it?
Here.
Rob?
The title of that presentation. Let's get to the bottom of things. Anything? Like, that's a great opportunity.
I love to get to the bottom of things.
Yeah, let's get to the bottom of this.
Sorry. Well, the board has the printout, so while staff, you know, try to bring up the right one, why don't you go ahead and get started?
We absolutely can do that. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. Today, I wanted to talk about initially going over field, our 2024 field data. So this is really just going over the first two months, but just talking about the response levels of our field service officers in unincorporated Thurston County. So for the last two months, we've actually seen an increase of a 21% over last year's calls. Thank you. And again, we're just looking at January and February, but as promised with these being quarterly, I'm going to keep up to date on all statistics.
Yeah, just more.
There you go. In comparative data, from the other jurisdictions, Thurston County is currently at 43% of total overall calls for 2024. You can see the graph where it shows 2023 and 2024 this time last year, and an additional breakout showing the types of calls that we're going out on. So stray, again, is our highest call volume, followed by enforcement, and then cruelty for January was high. We did have a chance to go over what the 2023 TCOM data was. So last time I was here, I presented overall what the 2022 TCOM data was comparative to our call volume. We have since been able to go over 2023's data and compare it to our overall calls. So when you look at the call breakdown, this 2023 actually had less pet animal calls than 2022, and you can see where there was a slight difference. It looks like livestock increased in 2023 in call volume as well. When we break down those statistics even a little...oh, I jumped ahead. I'm sorry, guys. So again, like last year, we did omit some of these calls, and again, they're for several reasons that we explained. So 24 of the 92 were in areas that we do not service, such as Bucauda, Tenino, Ranier. 24 were info-only calls, so people calling to report a lost pet, people calling to report a found pet. Seven of those calls were initiated by TCSO onsite and not through TCOM, and then 25 were miscellaneous. Those are usually duplicates, can sometimes be mental health call-related and not really pet animal call, or there was no information attached to the call to be able to respond to. So then, the remaining calls, the breakdown last year was 583 overall animal calls, breaking down to 205 were pet animal calls. And as a reminder, Jazz responds primarily to pet animal calls, and we do not respond to livestock. So continuing forward, we want to look at the breakdown. We have seen some shift in call times and call volumes, as well as calls received from 2022 to 2023. So there was an overall shift in call times. So 84 of the 205 calls were during business hours, and this is a 34% decrease from last year. And then 121 of those calls were after-hours calls, and that is a 24.7% increase. That includes the 24-hour emergency response. So we received 125 of the 205 pet animal calls from TCOM last year. That number was increased from 45%. So in 2022, we only received 45% of TCOM calls, and that has since increased to 61%. So we have seen a significant increase in calls that are actually, that gap is shrinking of those calls that we weren't receiving. So we did not receive 79 of those calls, and that, like I said, is a decrease from 54% last year to 39%. And of the 124 calls that we received, of the 125 calls, I'm sorry, that we received, we responded to 124. The only call we didn't respond to is we didn't have an officer onsite a day that a call came in for a dog in a hot car. So of every call that we did receive, we responded to save for one.
So Sarah, do you have any ideas about why you're still not getting all of the calls that are coming into TCOM?
So there's still going to be some gap you're going to see because the transfer button that TCOM initiated for us did not actually get implemented until towards the end of 2023. So you're still going to see, there's still a gap in 2023 over 2022, right? Because that transfer button wasn't implemented. You also want to keep in mind that the 24-hour on-call after-hours was implemented partway through 2023 as well.
So are you seeing early data in '24? Are you seeing another improvement there?
We're going to be pulling the data in March so that we can then give quarterly comparisons of 2024. That way, it's not such a long waiting period, but we're still waiting till the end of March to pull three months of data to comparatively go through to compare to our data.
So in theory, that could be zero.
In theory, I'm going to say that it's probably not going to be zero because it's always going to rely, there's a human component, right? So some people may not want to wait for the phone to be answered once it's transferred. Some people may hang up when they get transferred because they already gave that information. So there's that kind of human component that I don't think it would ever be 100% satisfied because human nature, impatient, it could be, you know, if for some reason we didn't answer on the first ring, people don't always like leaving a message or waiting for additional information or having to explain something again. So I would not say that it would be zero. In theory, it could, but I would say just given human nature and how emergencies operate, that it would not be zero.
But we should be getting closer.
But we should be seeing the gap grow smaller every time.
Should be closer to zero than 39%.
Right, but 39% is an improvement over 54.
Yeah.
Moving on from TCOM data, there was some request for more information along licensing, and so I wanted to provide that information for you. So license fees, first off, according to the ILA, are considered a direct revenue for the jurisdictions, which means that the income goes directly to offset a jurisdiction's assessment rather than, on a per-item rather than a per-capita basis. So where your assessment is a per-capita, this is a per-sale item. So part of direct revenues are licensing, adoptions, and reclaims. All of those, you receive licensing, you receive the full amount. Adoptions, you receive $15, and reclaims, you receive $15 for every single one of those transactions that goes to offset the assessment as part of a direct revenue. Per the ILA with licensing, the powers and duties of Jazzcom does have the following powers, which is one, to set fees and charges for services related to animals at the shelter. That includes reclaim and adoption fees, as well as license fees. Shall be established by Jazzcom. That is written within the ILA. Also, per the ILA, I wanted to just show again where it says each party shall receive credit for revenue received for the sale of licenses, redemption of animals, and adoption of animals. And so that gets reflected when we calculate your per-capita assessment.
So when we have a different license fee than the cities, that's you guys that said that?
We can now. It didn't used to be that way. That was a change that was agreed upon in 2021 when the ILA was resigned. So we could make recommendations and change the licensing fees, but...
We set the fee, but you can make it a recommendation to them.
That would, that would be the more of "we recommend" in those cases.
Right, so...
I'm just questioning why it says license fees shall be established by Jazzcom. That doesn't sound like recommendation.
No, that's not. So, number one, I was not aware of that change in the ILA, so that's very informative. We're all learning more about Jazzcom all the time.
If that was an ILA agreement, then couldn't they just go ahead and do it so we didn't have to do it ordinate?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking that the fees that the board set are in county code.
Correct.
Jazzcom has no authority to change county code, so we'll just follow up on that. But Sarah, just for your information, the board has been discussing bringing the counties' fees into alignment with the cities, and we're, we've been working on what steps we have to follow to make that happen. So...
We ought to have a lawyer here.
Yeah, we should have a lawyer here. Where's, where's Travis or Scott? But good to know.
I would say that you're not the only jurisdiction that the licensing, the licensing is in the municipal code currently, so that might be a recommendation for all jurisdictions to perhaps take the same steps that you guys have discussed taking in the future. So for us, licensing is renewed yearly. We don't have a lifelong licensing. Licenses are sold in person or online, so you can come into the shelter, or you can renew your license online through our portal. And any pet owner who has purchased a license receives a yearly reminder to renew.
How do you send the yearly reminder?
It's in the mail. So we print monthly, and every month, we send out the renewal notices to remind people to renew their license.
What are the renewal rates like?
The renewal rates are the same. There is no, the only fee difference, if a pet owner has lost the license, then we charge a $2 replacement fee to get a new license.
But in terms of the follow-through, I guess, is the rate of reminders versus people actually renewing?
That is a fantastic question that I can follow up with you guys on. I will see if I can pull that from our data. There are some benefits to licensing, so I know, and this is a question that gets brought up a lot, the difference between microchipping and licensing. We recommend both because first, a visual ID tag has been proven in studies that that is the number-one way to get your pet home within the first 72 hours. So we always encourage having a visual ID, which can also be a license. It's also a direct line to us. If we can provide contact information, we also give free rides home the first time. A licensed pet is lost. So if you're a pet owner, this is the first time that your dog's ever got out and it has a license, we will give it a free ride home. We, they also get a longer care period. So when there's identification on a pet, the stray hold goes from 48 to 96 hours in order to give time for that animal to be reclaimed.
What happens to it the other way?
Once it's, the stray hold is up, then it becomes ours legally to either put up for adoption, send to rescue. Circumstances vary. We do still recommend a microchip. However, I will say it's always great to have both. One, because collars can fall off, licenses can come off, and you have a secondary. The other one that I want to bring up is most people don't realize that microchips move in a pet's body. It's not always in the same place that's, it's implanted. So if you have a dog who's maybe 12 years old, you got it as a puppy, you had it microchipped at that time, there's a good chance that microchip isn't actually where it was originally implanted. It could be somewhere else. We have found them in the back leg haunch area before. We have found them in the chest area. And so if somebody doesn't know to scan the entire pet looking for a microchip, your pet could still be lost and not find its way home because the initial scan up top between the shoulder blades didn't return with a microchip number. And also, another thing for people to realize is that microchips are not, the scanners are not all created equal. A lot of companies will only create scanners that reflect their microchip, and so you have to make sure that it's being scanned with a universal microchip scanner, and so sometimes it won't pick up the code. So that's why we always recommend to have both. Microchips are important when you lose an animal. Like I said, the first 72 hours, it's a visual ID tag. We see microchips being effective in one to two weeks after the pet is lost because that's when it's coming to us, and then by that time, it usually doesn't have a collar or any kind of ID on it. And so that's where we see microchips are most effective on getting pets home. So this is the direct revenues from licensing specifically for Thurston County for 2021, 2022, and 2023. So this is the number of licenses sold, as well as the direct revenue that went to offset the jurisdictional assessment.
Okay, so just to, to follow up, Thurston County Code does have the specific fees in our code. If we're gonna follow the ILA, then that's something that we'll need to change. And I think that the conversation had been to not have the specific fee in the code anyway to make it easier to change, but so it's there right now.
Like I said, I don't think you guys are the only ones that have it built into their municipal codes.
I remember discussing the, like, you know, saying that the code can say specific fees or stuff like Jazzcom or whatever.
Yep, it could.
The debate about whether we could do it that way. Maybe we decided we didn't want or couldn't, but...
Well, when we bring this back to the board, we'll bring the ILA so we all know exactly what it says.
And so enforcement of licensing, not licensing your pet, is considered, considered a civil infraction. Currently, in unincorporated Thurston County, we do have to call a sheriff's deputy to issue a citation if there is a failure to license.
We can certainly talk about citations now, or we can look at the information that Sarah and her team have gathered about livestock and have the citation conversation afterwards. What would you prefer?
After the training.
Okay, so we'll come back to citations.
So in response to the Board of County Commissioners' request to look into how other counties do livestock, I did reach out to five different counties that were similar in population and demographics. So looking at counties that both had urban and rural and were roughly the same population size. Four out of the five counties did respond, and so Snohomish County to start, their livestock is handled through their county animal services.
Spokane.
In Spokane is a interesting, so the previous one was Snohomish. This one is Spokane. So Spokane actually splits theirs, where cruelty and neglect is investigated by their animal control officers at their county shelter, which is scraps. However, the sheriff's office handles stray livestock, so they have a split of how they handle livestock. Benton County Sheriff's Office handles livestock entirely for the county.
Sheriff does?
Yep, in Benton County, the sheriff does. And then in Watcomb County, they actually contract with a local nonprofit humane society. So there is a variety of ways that the county can choose to handle livestock, and I think it comes down to more about what works for our county and what is the best fit for how that is handled. Because as you can see, each county handles it in a somewhat different fashion, just from the few I reached out to.
Clark didn't respond.
Clark didn't respond.
When you talk about livestock, is, is it cattle that are the most, horses the most, goats? What's the most?
That would be a good question. I don't know what some of those calls look like since we don't respond to livestock.
Did any of those jurisdictions mention that the state has a brand inspection unit?
They did not, but I do know that the state has a brand inspection unit.
Well, I'm just wondering if their majority were cattle, for an example, or maybe not majority. Possibly, we could shift this over, at least on the cattle, to the brand inspectors and let them earn their way, because I know they got a pretty easy gig. So it might be worth looking into that there's some other way to partner even maybe. Maybe they'll give us their brand inspection fee or something, and we can have one of our people do it. Let's, let's be, try to be innovative and see if we can save the taxpayers money and utilize what's out there.
So I'm gonna say that I really appreciate the work that Sarah and her team have done so far to look into the, you know, who does what. But I think as Thurston develops a plan, if that's what the board wants to do for how to address livestock calls in our county, that maybe our own staff ought to start doing the research and develop some options.
Sure, I'm not trying to give Sarah's assignment. She's got plenty to do. I'm just saying, well, look, we'll explore what we can.
That's something Rob and I can talk about, is who might take on that research project and start looking into this.
Ready for questions, Sterling?
I have a couple.
So my, you answered why only those five counties were asked. I guess I'll go back...
What was the answer to that?
I said I looked into demographics of the county that were somewhat reasonable in matching populations, as well as having both urban and rural populations.
I'm wondering, my next question is, the auditor's office has asked about doing licensing for pets. At my last check-in, she brought this conversation back up and says she hadn't heard from Jazzcom, and I'm wondering, is there going to be any follow-up with her? What's the next step to have that conversation with the auditor?
We had some initial conversations last year, and it did drop off. I would say it's not her or I's fault. I would say it just is a matter of there are other things going on, and we can certainly take up those discussions. There are concerns, however, of whether or not there would be access given to our database so that they can actually get in there or not. She had talks of charging us a fee to administer licensing in that fashion, so there is more to it than I think initially, the initial thoughts that came from that.
And then my next question is, I had requested this information before. What's the dollar amount for not going full
What's the dollar amount for not going full service? If that's the direction the board wants to take? I know you said it would, we would have to look at the number of calls specifically for, for, for some of it. It wouldn't be kind of like it was before. And so has there been any gathering of that information?
What we actually need at this time is more guidance from you as the commissioners as to what you would like us to look at. So is it just simply no field service at all? Are you wanting to us to just not do enforcement but still do some other field calls? There needs to be a little bit more guidance from the Board of County Commissioners for me to be able to establish what that number looks like.
Okay, that was not relayed to us last time. So that's, then that's a conversation we need to have because if that's the direction we need to give, then. But we've been kind of just waiting on this information. So that's good to know.
How about infractions or citations or whatever?
Yeah, let's talk about those. So as commissioners will recall, I had talked to our attorney who said, there you go, that it is up to the Board of County Commissioners to authorize Jazzcom to issue citations. And that as far as having a citation book, that once the board authorized Jazzcom, that they could basically print their own. That that would not be a barrier. Then the other thing that the attorneys recommended here was that the Board of County Commissioners, if you want to go down that path, enter into an MOU with Jazzcom that gives clear authority for specific things. And the board had asked, what is Jazzcom currently doing in other jurisdictions? There, there was of course more conversation than that. But this is an initial response to what is Jazzcom currently doing within Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Yelm? Is Yelm a new partner or?
Yelm is a contracted partner, but because it's so costly for them to write citation booklets, they just choose to have us call their local police department when we need to issue a citation.
But, so Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater. And Sarah, could you address what it is your staff do?
This represents activity in Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater?
That's what she's about to speak to.
These are our call types. So these are also call types that we go out on in unincorporated Thurston County. What's highlighted here, the ones in yellow, are call types that have a citation attached to it. These in Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, we have citation booklets. And so we can go ahead and actually cite these on-site as needed or after an investigation has been complete. The ones highlighted in red are ones that usually end up with an initial investigation. And then we work with our partnering law enforcement to obtain a warrant and recommend charges be brought. So those are the two that are highlighted in red. But then the call types highlighted in yellow are ones that we issue citations as an agency in the cities of Olympia, Tumwater, and Thurston County. I'm sorry, Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater.
So we can do the same thing, just authorize the same list and then they can print the tickets?
Yes.
And then we're around this whole problem. But Commissioner Fournier, you had issues with that, I would remember.
I have reservations. But so this doesn't represent anything, like there's no numbers of what you actually have done in this arena. This is just saying what you could do.
This, this is the list of call types. In the last presentation that we did, I actually broke out what the different call types were for the different jurisdictions, but I can send that spreadsheet again.
So you can tell us how, like, how many, I'm curious, how many inspect premises, citations, did you issue in Lacey? You know, if the board wanted to know that information, could you send that?
Yes. That one is an interesting call that actually doesn't happen anymore because pet stores have, are no longer able to do business in Washington State. And the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater also banned the sale of, the retail sale of puppies and kittens back in 2022.
So that's gonna be none?
We could, correct, we could pull those numbers of what those three jurisdictions look like.
Thank you. So giving Jazzcom permission to issue citations, it's just issuing a ticket? If the person didn't pay a ticket, if it then became a warrant? The, they can't issue warrants as our attorneys have advised us. They certainly can't go and arrest someone. But in just that first initial action of starting a ticket, currently they're having to call the sheriff, and those calls would stop and that burden on our sheriff would stop if they were able to just write the ticket.
They'd still, still call the sheriff because that's what you're doing in cities, but all the yellow ones you would handle and the sheriff wouldn't get the call?
I cannot guarantee that they won't get the call, but we would handle it, yes. This is the equivalent of like code enforcement. That's what the civil infractions are.
Can we, you have a monthly meeting with the city managers, right?
I do.
Can you just ask them, are the Jazzcom enforcement folks out of control, you know, having to be, you know?
I can ask them how effective it is in their jurisdiction.
The Olympia Police Department and their overzealous issuance of barking dog citations?
Yep.
And we can find out if it's working. And if it is working, then we can just do the same thing. That's my inclination.
And maybe a pro and con type of a thing, maybe by the time you're done talking to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd be having larger, you know, additional discussions, but you know, I, I, sorry, what was I? I, you know, I have, of course, like I said, I have reservations. You know, anytime you're giving anybody law enforcement authority, the state has made it pretty clear that they want some pretty stringent guidelines followed when law enforcement officers are hired. And I mean, I, I would want, I, I would be asking, you know, what your hiring practices are for your officers if they were given even limited commissions. And I would, I would want to hear about polygraphs, psychological tests, the same exact processes that we require of general law enforcement officers. I think we would have an obligation to at least talk and consider making sure that limited-commissioned law enforcement officers go through the same stringent hiring practices that our citizens have demanded in Washington.
We aren't limited-commissioned officers.
But that's what we're talking about doing. Well.
Are your code enforcement officers limited-commissioned?
No.
What we're talking about, that's, that's the conversation that we're having right now is do we want to hand out that authority?
No, these are not commissioned.
To be able to hand out tickets and summon people to court, they would be law enforcement officers. They would be limited-commissioned.
Not according to state law, county code, or our attorneys.
That was the conversation we were having last meeting was commissioning, giving out commissions to do law enforcement activities.
So this was what I was trying to clarify at the last meeting. No one's talking about commissions. But the, they would be able to issue these tickets without being commissioned.
We're not commissioned in the cities, and we still issue civil infractions.
And, and so do our code enforcement officers. They're not given any type of commission.
I, okay, I guess I'll put my reservations out there. My reservations are that, one, we need to figure out what we're going to do in terms of Jazzcom and finally have that conversation. You know, first, we need to figure out like exactly what it is that we're going to be requesting, if it's no field service or no enforcement, so Sarah can get us that, those numbers. And we can have a conversation on if that's the path we want to move forward with. And secondly, I think in general, just the relationship between Jazzcom and our sheriff's office needs to improve. And I don't know what that looks like, but the board is getting put in a very awkward position, you know, and this is not benefiting any of our constituents. And doing Band-Aid approaches is not really like helping either. So I just think we really need to figure out a path forward and have that conversation seriously. And if we're going to be sticking with Jazzcom full service, then, you know, we are going to be having that conversation. We're gonna see how we're going to move forward that way. If we're not, then we have to figure alternates. But, you know, for me, I just, at this time, without having that full conversation, it's, I, I'm just, I have my reservations about doing this prematurely.
I guess from my perspective, I'd like to hear from Robyn from her meeting before we cut anything off.
I'll have a conversation at my next meeting with the city managers, which is on, I think, next Thursday.
And then we'll have some sense of, is it working? Other places, I guess. I'm always listening to what works or what doesn't.
Okay, is there anything else to address in this session?
Oh, yeah, one other thing.
Yes, go ahead.
How's the work in relationship with the sheriff's offices? Have things kind of mellowed out or better or worse?
We have had quarterly meetings with the TCSO supervisors and chiefs since we went to full service in 2022. And in those quarterly meetings, we are not told that there's any problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Particularly situation.
Okay, next up is an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions to discuss or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. Public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Tribal permitting is the large topic. We have thirty minutes scheduled. Commissioner's action may follow.
I don't see Travis yet, so I'm just.
And will he be here? That's what we're hoping. Travis, he says he's gonna be here.
That's my understanding, yes.
Josh or any of his staff?
He was.
Okay, it is 3:14 PM. We have finished the executive session that relates to item two on the works and session agenda. That was the thirty minute topic regarding tribal permitting. We're not going to be having any formal commissioner action as a result. We are now about to move into the second executive session of the afternoon. It's pursuant to RCW 423110I. Exact same section as the previous one regarding litigation or potential litigation to which the agency is likely to become a party when public knowledge is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. This topic relates to lake bottom ownership also scheduled for thirty minutes. Commissioner's action may follow. Then so it is now three fifteen. We'll come back at three forty five and we will complete the agenda at that time in a public session.
Thank you.
Okay, we are out of executive session for this March 20, 2024 work session at 3:45 PM. No commissioners' action is following, so we're going to move on in our agenda to item four, which is the Lake Management District Standard Operating Procedures Briefing. We have leadership from our lakes, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves, starting with Doug here on the left.
I'm Doug Carmen, Chair of the Long Lake Management District Steering Committee.
Barry Halverson, Lake Lawrence Steering Committee.
Margaret Tudor, Patterson Lakes Steering Committee.
David Nightingale, Patterson Lakes Steering Committee.
I'm your head, Patterson Lakes Steering Committee.
And we have two also active members, Diane and Gary, from Off-It Lake who may be coming in a little bit.
They had to commute down from Seattle, so.
Oh, okay, so hopefully they'll be able to join us. But commissioners, thank you very much for your time today. As this is sort of, I think, on some level, a momentous occasion. From the time that we embarked on this journey last year, talking about lake management districts, where, what the reporting relationship might be, how they functioned within the county, et cetera. I just have to give a outload of thanks to Stuart, who is online. He is now the point of contact at Environmental Health for lake management districts. He and his team are helping to facilitate and provide that administrative support. But more importantly, I just want to thank the volunteers with the lake management district steering committees. Because when the document of the standard operating procedures that are before you, and hopefully will be coming to the board early April for acceptance, there's been 18 versions of it. So it started off with a framework that continued to be built upon as we provided clarification of a process. And then there was additional collection of re- And then there was additional collection of resource materials for any of the LMDs, which not only helps to outline sort of the expectations of the county, of the LMDs, of future potential contractors, but really it becomes a resource guide and a resource manual for current and potentially future LMDs should they come to be. So with that, I know that Barry had pulled together a PowerPoint presentation and been happy to turn over the floor here.
Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a brief look at it. A lot of the slides I'm just going to run through fairly quickly because they're just overviews.
I think you went the other one. If I were you, I'd open the other one because it'll run as PowerPoint. This is just a PDF.
They're both web-based. They're not.
The other one, the, yep, that one. Oh, that one didn't work either. All right, well, here we go.
Not that was just theirs. Not exactly lakes, but.
No, but we had the PowerPoint up earlier, so I don't know.
I don't know what happened to it. You can go ahead and start talking, and I will see what I.
Well, I just like, well, to start out, this was a very collaborative effort by all lake management districts, all staff, to include some state, Department of Ecology and Department of Natural Resources and Department of Fish and Wildlife. It incorporated all the policies and regulations from both the county and the state. And that's why it was so comprehensive, and that's why there's been so many revisions, so many versions of this document. And we don't think it's completely done, as we'll address when we go through this slide. Where we've been started back in October, August, excuse me, when you gave direction to the staff. It continued in September, potential changes. Then we detailed a list of questions in September to the county staff, deputy county manager, who you gave the mission to, to work this process. And then the commissioners were briefed, you all were briefed on 25 September, and you gave guidance to go ahead and pursue the move of the lake management districts to public health in conjunction with the lake management district leadership. With that, we started bimonthly meetings every two weeks on the 3rd of October. Go ahead and move forward, one. That's the overview. This is where we've been. And this is the slide we're on right now. In December, we started monthly transition meetings. So from September through 12 December, we were two times a month, meeting every other week. And in between that, the LMDs were meeting, having their own meeting to refine the versions of the SOP, identify what we saw as issues and problems, and then getting that to the staff ahead of our next transition meeting so that we could discuss it at those meetings and make as efficient use of our time as we possibly could. And then on the 15th of December, you all approved the move of the budget from Public Works to Environmental Health. And that kind of set the stage for Stuart Whitford from Environmental Health to really get involved with us on all of this and his folks in Environmental Health. And then on the 19th of January, the SOP draft was completed and submitted for final review. We thought that was going to be the final draft. It turned out to have a couple more iterations. And then on the 27th of February, the LMDs themselves completed their final review and submitted it to staff for their input. Now, we've been getting input from staff all along, and we've been making the corrections and changes all along. But on the 27th of February, the LMDs felt that we were there, and we submitted our final draft to the staff for final review. Since then, there's been a couple more things added to it. One of them has been Appendix O, which was left out of the initial SOP because it was so voluminous. It was, we took Appendix O, which is the LMD creation, and it was a, there was a 66-page document that had already been written by the county back in 2006. We took that document from 2006, and we updated it with the current versions of RCW 3661. And we overhauled it to include all state and county policies, et cetera. And the LMDs just finished review of that Appendix O to the SOP two days ago, and then submitted it to Mr. Gelder and Mr. Whitford for staff review. So the rest of the SOP, they've had for over a month. Appendix O, they've had just for a couple days, although we've been working in concert with each other and collaboratively. The LMDs finally finished their review of it and submitted it two days ago. So where we are is today, briefing you, giving you an overview of the SOP, and getting ready to answer any questions that you might have about that. Where we're going, we have another transition meeting on the 26th of March, where we're going to review what your comments are from today, any comments that the staff has provided on the SOP. Mr. Gelder provided us some input from the budget folks today on a couple changes or modifications that they would like to see. We're going to put those changes into the SOP along with anything else between now and the 2nd of April, when you have a briefing, I believe there's an AIS going forward, for you all to approve the SOP. So the SOP document, we want you to understand, we consider this to be a working document even after you approve it. And it's going to have changes made to it as they're identified by both staff and the LMDs. So this is an overview. As was already discussed, it encompasses all county and state policies and regulations. If you had a chance to look at the SOP online, you could see how it's linked to everything, all the different RCWs, all the different documents. As you go through the SOP, all you have to do is click on the link, and it takes you right to that RCW, or right to that policy letter, or right to that resolution, okay? There's been seven transition meetings to date. There's been six meetings just between the LMDs, working out between the four LMDs how we want things worked. There's been eighteen versions of the SOP to date. It encompasses 36 pages. It's all linked, all the references, all the appendices are linked to the document that's right now 36 pages long. So this is the SOP table of contents. What you need to see from this here is that the first portion of it, sections one through five, are the rules and responsibilities. Most of this was taken out of the admin rules that were worked by all of you and Tim Wilson early on. So a lot of that was incorporated into this first portion, sections one through five. Next slide. Then the LMDs took section six and added all the tasks that you see here. And in the SOP, we really went into detail on the step-by-step process of how to do these things, what the LMDs should do, what the LMDs can do, what the staff needs to do, and who needs to do it, step by step. If you had a chance to look at the SOP at all, you saw step one through sometimes 16. It walks you through how to do these different things, and it provides the links and the RCWs and the resolutions that go along with it. So as you're going through the SOP, all you have to do is to click on it, and it takes you right to the document. We consider these to be the critical tasks for the lake management district. Not only what the LMDs have to do, but what the staff has to do in concert with the lake management districts. So this last X is duplicated on the top of the next one. I mumbled when I was cutting and pasting that.
Y and Z, where they are.
Yeah, X is doubled. It didn't really double, but it's there. Then we got through all the tasks. We're at double E right now. That could be expanded upon if we find other tasks through the process as we go through this next year that we need to add. We'll do that in concert with the staff, Stuart Whitford and Mr. Gelder, depending on what the task encompasses. Stuart can probably handle most of that. Next slide. This is the appendices to that SOP. Every one of these appendices has a linked document that provides detailed information about every one of these things. These are the documents that provide the examples, the samples, and the templates for how we do those things in the tasks. So what we tried to do is, we were going through the different tasks step by step, is identify what documents, what examples from the county clerk submitting the document to the paper for running the notifications for establishment of an LMD or for the creation of the rates and charges in November of each year. So we tried to provide specific examples, current examples from this last year as Offutt and Patterson were going through this process. And we took those documents, current documents, and added them as appendices. Next slide. This is a continuation of the appendices. The only thing I'll note here is the LMD creation appendices has been completed by the LMDs and is currently in the hands of the staff for their final review. The IVAMP, Patterson and Offutt are going through that process right now, as you all well know. That process won't be completed until June of 2025, at which time we hope to have a step-by-step process of how a lake management district walks through an integrated aquatic vegetative management plan. And then we'll include Appendix P to the SOP.
Before we go on to the next page, just to call out attention to Appendix K. And that really is probably a big change in something, a new kind of expectation of any volunteers participating in the LMDs, and that is specifically understanding and going through the training for OPMA, for Open Public Meetings, because the way the work is basically structured is a smaller leadership team of the full steering committee. And so we wanted to make sure that we had all the checks and balances in there. Folks knew how to run meetings, make sure that all the documents were retained, et cetera.
Does that also include Public Records Act training?
Right. It includes all of that. And as a result of that, I know Long Lake and Lake Lawrence, we lost several steering committee members. They just didn't want to deal with it, so they resigned, and we've had to replace them.
We've lost other committee members in other committees because of OPMA training. It's like, it's not that bad, guys.
I will tell you that the pushback on it was personal emails, access to personal emails versus establishing LMD-specific emails, which all of us have now done. We haven't gone to the full commitment. We're still waiting for feedback from Chris Geller, your IT guy, on a couple pieces of it. Offutt Lake has gone strictly to a .org LMD email program. Patterson Lake has established their own.
It protects you just as much as it protects the county.
It does. Commissioner, one of the issues was cost. Chris still hasn't given us the final cost. To establish just an email account with the county is $7 a month per person. When you have 14 steering committee members on a lake management district, that can become burdensome financially to the LMD. And then if you add OneDrive and the other aspects of Microsoft for Business standard, then you're adding another $12 to $15 a month per person that has access to that.
All adds up.
It all adds up. So most of the LMDs have said, no, we're going to do it ourselves. Long Lake, I think you're considering the email.
Yeah, we're looking at the county's email. They have one which documents everything. And then we'll have another email that's tied to our website that does the, for questions and answers and whatnot. So it's all, it's updated.
A big part of the benefit of that potential utilization of the county email is the retention of emails. So if volunteers then left or departed, those still would be archived versus it being somewhere else, and it would be just that much easier to potentially.
That was the real problem, is that when somebody left the committee, then all of a sudden, where are those emails? We established a policy that you always copy the county email in everything you do, so there's a record that's retained forever.
And for Lake Lawrence, what we did is, as you all know, we established a Lake Lawrence Gmail address, lakelawrence750@gmail.com a year ago. And we moved everything off of my personal computer onto the Gmail account, all emails, all documents, everything. So we have already established that. It is also established in our website. If you've had a chance to go there and look at it, that's a Lake Lawrence website. It's not a Barry Halverson website, okay? And we're also looking at establishing one county email address. We have our LMD steering committee meeting tomorrow night, when we will vote on that. I don't know that we'll be able to get there yet because I'm still waiting for information from Chris on the final cost. And our steering committee is really antsy about the cost, as I'll explain to you here in just a minute. Next slide, please. So this is the thing that is, this is the main issue and concern that the LMDs have, is the admin rate, okay? We have yet, after six months, to receive any clarification on what that is. 5% is what we talked about. I think Ms. Campbell initially was looking at 10%. But we don't know how that's calculated, okay? What are the metrics involved in that admin rate? And that's what the LMDs need to know to move forward.
I think the 5% was based on assessments, so.
That's what we've been told.
That's what we've been told.
Right.
But we still don't know what the metrics are, because as you know, the first MUNIS report we got, Long Lake got it, and there was a lot of problems with that MUNIS report. We were still being charged for things that were not on a two-year lag, such as geodata.
And we do need to, that is one of those areas that we need to, not my strong suit, so I definitely need to partner.
Yeah, the key there is, for us, and what I told Barry, is I'm not concerned about that because you all have reimbursed us, are reimbursing us for those expenses anyway. It's just that we are concerned too that you don't have to reimburse us for things that you shouldn't have to reimburse us for.
And moving forward like geodata, we've had no contact with geodata. We've had no requests for geodata at all this entire year so far, and previous years too, quite frankly, okay? So we're wondering why, you know, we're getting these monthly bills for geodata on our MUNIS reports when they really shouldn't be there, and there's other costs in there. But like Doug said, Long Lake and Lawrence, we understand you've already decided to reimburse us for those costs for this year and next year. We don't, haven't seen a Patterson or Offutt Lake MUNIS report yet to see if there's, if it's on those. But the only thing that we really should see on our MUNIS report for 2024, 2025 are the two-year lag stuff or the admin rate. And we're seeing other things.
Well, we have been talking with geodata because they have the capability of doing direct billing to go that route versus through the internal rates.
My apologies. I didn't know that this was still hanging out. I thought that we'd had a strategy.
We built the budgets to kind of shift everything over, but how they're.
I don't want to make it seem like this is a big deal. I don't want to make it seem like this is a big deal, okay? Because we don't.
No, I appreciate that, but I just, I was not aware that this was still hanging out at all. I don't want the board to think that, you know, I have not provided information or that my staff have done.
No, we're not trying to make that implication at all. We understand, Lake Lawrence and Long Lake, that we've been in existence for a long time. A lot of things rolled over with the MUNIS. It's taken environmental health and public health services a while to get their budget up and going to take all that from public works. We are very understanding of that. And we've been very patient with it, and we will continue to be patient with it because we do understand that both the board, you and Mr. Gelder and Mr. Whitford are doing their best to try to make sure that that is done.
And I thought we had a strategy for this, but if that wasn't put in place, then Rob and I need to chat.
But this is just, these are just the two issues out of all the issues that we've been working on that still remain. Who hosts the SOP? Right now, I'll show you where we're hosting it right now, and you all can have access to it. We feel that because it should be a county document, you're approving it, that the county should host it. It should be on something county-wide document where everybody can have access to it versus on the Lake Lawrence website. I don't think so.
No, so I actually was.
It is a question.
Working with Stuart in terms of the most appropriate one, it makes sense that it goes onto the environmental health pages under the integrated pest management page or the IPM. So that's where all the prescriptions are, et cetera. It seems like it's the most logical location for it to live.
So we're just deciding where it's going to live, not that.
Documented.
There's an issue about having it on county.
The documented shell.
Absolutely, it ought to be on the county's website.
It's just a matter of where. Did it live in the commissioners somehow? Did it live in environmental health? And I think it just makes sense that if I were looking for it, I would probably go to environmental health.
It will live on our websites, but it should, it should live on one of yours that's appropriate for everybody else in the world.
And I would say it lives one place and things are linked back to the one place.
That's, yeah. And that's what we would prefer, be in one location and that the updates and changes to the document be there so that we don't have four different LMDs with four different versions. That's the main thing. Next slide. So what's next? Your approval. Answer your questions today, 2nd of April. Hopefully you've had enough of this whole thing. Update, the SOP is needed. This is going to be a, something that's going to be a living document. And we've put some words here for your consideration. We don't feel that every amendment or change has to come to you for approval. We feel it could be allocated down to the county manager or the deputy county manager or Stuart Whitford at environmental health. And that the LMDs, and if the LMDs and environmental health, Stuart Whitford agree, then it can be made as a change. And we'll have a change sheet that will be attached to the SOP. Next slide.
Before you go on, the word approval, one of the things we've talked about is wondering whether you want to approve or endorse or accept. A different, a different word than approve. We don't know, but.
I drafted the initial AIS as an acceptance, for lack of better terms, because it wasn't necessarily approving it as in a. It's not a policy per se, as much as it's a procedural document of sorts.
I think it's really an operations manual is what it is, in my opinion. It has all these procedures that, how are we going to operate together? You know, it's not a, it's not a, an ordinance you're passing. It's just agreement between the county and the LMDs about, here's how we're going to work together, make it work.
So I raise that issue only so you think about it.
Say that again, Doug?
I raise that issue only to think about it because, as Rob said, he has a different word and.
Like an MOU even or something.
Well, I guess.
The board approves the MOUs, the board approves ILAs, the board approves policy.
I'm curious about like the way you worded it. Approval by both LMDs and staff, as if they're. I mean, the LMDs might not agree amongst themselves. That's what I'm wondering, like what if?
Well, we have, and we've worked it out, and that's those meetings in between the transition meetings. We have to.
If there's a change that somebody wants and it's, it's got three LMDs behind it and staff, and there's one LMD that says, I don't really like this change, does that mean it's vetoed?
No, we have to come to a consensus, sir. Which means at least three of the four LMDs are going to have to agree to it to move forward with that particular change.
So you guys internally have created your own process of majority.
We have had our own meetings in between the transition meetings, yes. And we've reviewed things, we've debated things, we've discussed things, we've researched things. It's been quite a process, quite frankly.
You're talking about two LMDs that have 30 years of experience each, and we're just beginning. So we are.
We're babies.
We appreciate the expertise that's coming to us through these LMDs.
Actually approaching 40.
So the update SOP is needed, Commissioner, was the after-review and approval of changes by both LMDs and staff. That's not the current SOP. The LMDs themselves, each LMD has identified the chair, vice chair, co-chairs, whoever's going to sign the acceptance or the approval of the SOP at our transition meeting next Tuesday. That's when we're going to do a signature on a paper saying, yeah, we approved this to move forward for you to accept, approve, or whatever.
Modify, whatever.
Whatever you want to do. It's not our call, it's yours. But we wanted you to know that there has been agreement amongst the four LMDs that this is what we want to move forward. And we felt that it was necessary for us to put signature to paper for you to understand and know that that's what we have put forward. And there's, it's been back and forth a lot.
You know, all the steering committees of all the LMDs have blessed it.
It's not just the leadership. It's gone before the steering committees and been approved by each of the steering committees. Well, either unanimously or a consensus.
Somebody quit.
A quorum. Or someone quit.
Part of having, you know, signatures from the LMDs and signatures from the board was really a way of just saying, signaling, right? This is, this is a new start. This is a new, a way of approaching the administration of LMDs.
Because I know there's been issues in the past about, well, who agrees or disagrees with what? And this kind of solidifies that. Not only for us, but for you. So this is a change document. This is an example. But it includes Appendix O when it is completed by the staff, final review by both staff and the LMDs. We're looking at approved by. We just put that in there as an example. You can decide who you want that to be, okay? Provide specific guidance, just the comments on what Appendix O does. And that change document would then go at the end of the SOP on your website so that everybody knows what changes have been made to that SOP historically. We think that that's an important thing to include so that it doesn't have to come back before you every time there's a change or an add-on or an appendix. Next slide. So this was just to let you know, this is where it resides for Lake Lawrence. It resides right on our front page. You click there and you go right to the SOP and all the links for the appendices and references and stuff are embedded. What is not on this particular slide, because we just did it, is Appendix O. Because I submitted these a week and a half ago so that the clerk of the board would have it to give out to you. So I've also added on our front page, Appendix O, LMD creation. Because it's not yet part of the SOP, because we're still working that particular aspect of it. And we just gave it to staff. So you can go there, you can click on it, you can go through the site. And on each of our LMDs websites, we've linked the other LMDs websites. So if you go to one, there's a location there to go to the others too. So it's all kind of integrated.
I don't think I could have designed it any better.
I don't know anybody.
I think this is going to be a, this is going to be a reference document statewide, I think. I think other counties and LMDs are going to say, oh, here's, here's how to do it.
Next slide.
It was just questions.
So just for your information, before we get to questions, I've had two other jurisdictions query me about the SOP. And I've told them, I said, it's open, it's public, it's open stuff. It's on our website. You can go and you can look at it. And they both have provided very favorable comments about that. And we have meetings, as you all know, with the other 24 lake management districts in the state a couple times a year. Right now, we've been working with the other LMDs in the state over the bill amendment that got tabled this year because of DFW coming in and saying, we want to make a change. So we're still working with DFW on the change to that bill to include next year in the legislature. So that'll be our third year going forward in the legislature for that bill amendment, R C W 3661. But we're working through it with DFW. And when we get back with DFW and get things resolved, we'll let you know how that all works out and if we might need your help on something. We've gone all the way back to 1989, 1990. There was a court case in 1990 between then Commissioner Karen Fraser in 1990 and DFW pushing back on LMD assessments against Summit Lake's LMD assessment. Okay? So we've gotten a copy of that 432-page case. We've been reviewing it. I've been reviewing it. So there's a lot going on with DFW and the LMDs and the bill. That's just a sidelight to this, but I just wanted you to know that there are other jurisdictions that have actively visited our website, Lake Lawrence, downloaded our SOP and are using it.
How many, you said 24 LMDs? I know you've given me a spreadsheet I have in my office somewhere, but you probably have it at the top of your head. How many counties have multiple LMDs?
Seven. And there's lots of city jurisdictions that have LMDs too. It's not just counties.
I love how fast you had that answer ready.
I've been living this.
Barry's got facts through the roof.
I've been living this for quite a few years now. So before I conclude and turn it over to you for questions, I'd just like to say, and I'm sure the rest of us up here would, how much, initially we were apprehensive about this move, as you all know. We didn't push back on it. We said, okay, we'll wait and see and we'll work with you on it. And we did. And the persons that you put in charge to handle this, Mr. Gelder and then Mr. Whitford, have been amazing to work with, I just want to tell you. I've never had a more collaborative, enjoyable experience working with a county or state government than I have in the last five months. So I just like.
Put that on a Yelp review for us.
I will tell you, I've worked with a lot of county and state governments in my career. So that's something coming from me. I just want to put that out there. I don't know if you want to say anything.
No, I think you've done just fine.
Four questions? We got about nine minutes to go. Kim, Mr. Edwards?
I really don't have any questions. This whole thing has given me a headache trying to review it, put it all together. And I just want to thank all parties involved, the lakes folks, our own folks. And thank you so much for all the effort that you've put in. And I think you've got a great product here that's come from all that effort. And it's actually many years worth the effort, so thank you.
Commissioner, I thank you for that, but there's been a lot of effort on the part of staff too.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I just want to make that point. A lot of different aspects of staff.
One of the things too, though, that I would recommend is, we've been talking about sort of these transition meetings that went from every two weeks to once a month to find some rhythm, to continue to have those kind of open communications, probably quarterly, to include myself and Stuart in those, to keep on making sure that, you know, as we kind of go with it, it's a living document. What are those things that need to be addressed and amended, that type of thing? Just to make sure that all lines of communication are.
I suppose ecology could make changes, RCWs could be changed.
Sure, right.
So a lot of things could be changed.
And we're working with ecology right now on procedures for surveys and stuff like that actively. There's the APAM permit that's still, we're waiting for to get back from ecology. We're hoping to get that the next week. And we have open dialogue with the aquatic resource specialists from ecology. Big, big help there.
When you said WDFW wanted to make changes, you mean to like, they want to suggest changes to your proposed bill? Or they've got their own?
No, they wanted us to change our bill.
They've got ideas?
They had ideas, and we've pushed back on those ideas because it's going back to the 1990 Summit Lake discussion where they want to put it under a different RCW for assessment fees. It won't work. That whole court case was done through the Superior Court of Thurston County and then was appealed to the circuit court, and what, DFW was overruled on the case.
I don't really understand the nuances of the difference. What is their motivation in wanting to change the assessment fees?
Because they feel the assessment fees are too high and that they shouldn't be paying that much. Same thing that they had in 1990.
Oh, because they're a, they're a property owner.
They're a property owner. They're a property owner on every one of our lakes.
And they, and each LMD in many cases charges their fees in a different way. And so.
But from my, my perspective is that those, the Fish and Wildlife folks that are paying that were very short-sighted because all of the citizens that use those public boat launches, which they're being charged a little bit in comparison, just like other property owners. I mean, they're not recognizing all the use that goes through those public boat launches. They really get used to it.
And this, this court case back in 1990 really lays that out and shows.
Right, but they're trying to get out from underneath that ruling by where Karen actually took the action against it. I was here in those days.
And Karen Fraser was very, very well educated on the subject. And she went to testify at both the House and the Senate on the RCW 3661 and the amendment to the RCW and in a court case. She actually filed testimony for the court case in 1990.
Anyone else? Just the level of trust that's required to get this much stuff done, I wanted to comment on that. And thank you guys for trusting us and, you know, this is, this is pretty cool. I appreciate the work that you've all done.
I think of this three years ago, so.
Another nightmare.
So I guess I'll say thank you so much for the collaboration. Right, because it takes, it takes two parties to really come to this moment. So thank, thank you for, you know, kind of letting us reset, as we called it, and kind of start afresh with a new department. And, no, I also like to commend Rob and Stuart for their work on this because I know it's been, it's been a long process to get here, so.
I think we all share a sense of the importance of these lakes to the citizens of this county and this state. And this is an opportunity for Citizens Group to take, to play a role that's not easily played anywhere else.
And Patterson Lake has a particular responsibility. We expect to work with all of our community neighborhoods and to bring them on board and to help them understand where, how we've come to this point and bring in experts to describe what's happening to our lakes. So we hold a lot of responsibility and we want to take it seriously.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll, I'll say, just echo everyone else's said. I'm really glad to see us get to this point where we can work this way. And obviously, we, new county manager will play a role in all this. And we invite you to come meet him on April 5th. We're having an open house. Is it going to be in this room? Yeah, so we come and, come and say hello to the atrium and, and, you know, he'll, he'll play some role, I'm sure, in things as we go forward and get this thing rolling smoothly forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, excited about that. All right.
Thank you so much.
All right, it's 4:27, and unless there's a burning commissioner item, I will turn the meeting. the meeting.
I have one thing. I was trying to find the land acknowledgement on our website and I couldn't find it. Do we know if it's on there or can we make it more prominent on there? That's the only thing I have.
Yeah, I typed it on my computer, and I'm sure I can.
Sweet.
Write it to whoever needs to and put it where it needs to go.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, but I guess I'll get it to Megan. She can find the right spot.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Where's Jared?